Welcome everyone to the Madison City Council Meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, August 16th. You're probably asking yourselves, "Why aren't we here at J.C. Park?" Well, it's a beautiful day outside and we just wanted to get out, get some fresh air, and enjoy National Night Out. So, we invite everyone to stick around after the City Council Meeting and check out fire trucks, police cars will be here, we've got bouncy houses, and we're also doing a cookout. So, we invite everybody here to enjoy our time together and outdoors. Like all of our meetings, we have a pretty full agenda. We'll start by standing, removing our hats, filing our heads, and reciting the Lord's Prayer, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Forgive us, as we forgive our sins, our wickedness. Give us this day our daily bread. And we will celebrate this with a joyful song. For it is not a dispensation, but a reward for sinners. Over my left there is the United States Fire Department, City of Indianapolis. Other than being outside, this is a regular council meeting. Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Dan DeTillo?
Here.
Bartlett?
Here.
Shaffer? Lucy DeTillo?
Here.
Carly Cress?
Here.
Patrick Tevenoff?
Here.
Thank you. We're going to be sharing the mic a little bit tonight. Counsel, if you had an opportunity to review the minutes from August the 2nd, so we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to adopt the minutes as written.
I would second that.
Any discussion? While there, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We all know we do have one excused absence, Councilman Chastain, tonight in the city of Madison, Indiana. Moving on, we'll turn it over to Joe for first reading of several ordinances.
The first ordinance we have here is 2022-16, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, establishing the City of Madison Redevelopment Authority. Whereas, Indiana Code 36-7-14.55 authorizes the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, to create the redevelopment authority controlled by the Board of Directors consisting of three members. And whereas, in order to pursue the public purpose of the act, the Common Council now decides to establish the City of Madison Redevelopment Authority, now therefore being intervened by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, as follows. Pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-14.55-7, the City of Madison Redevelopment Authority is hereby created as a separate body, corporate and politic, and as an instrumentality of the City of Madison for the purposes and to exercise the powers set forth in an act or otherwise granted by law. The redevelopment authority shall be governed by a Board of Directors consisting of three members, each of whom is appointed by the mayor of the City of Madison. This ordinance shall be a full force effect from the next decision. The next resolution or ordinance on first reading is ordinance number 2022-17, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, establishing a clean drinking water non-reverting fund. Whereas, the City of Madison Water Utility has a clean water project, and whereas Jefferson County has contributed $1 million to support the project. And whereas, the City of Madison wishes to accelerate the fund, the order deposit fees, and other funds to pay the expenses toward the project. Now therefore being intervened by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, as follows. An account established for the purposes of positive amounts of donations, corporations, and city accounts, or from any other lawful source, will pay the required obligations for the City of Madison for the clean drinking water non-reverting fund. And all funds contained in the account shall be expended only for the exclusive purposes of paying the expenses related to the part of clean drinking water for the City of Madison Water Utility. The express and written approval... The express and written approval of the Board of Public Works and Safety shall be obtained prior to the expenditure of the funds from the account. The account shall be non-reverting and exist perpetually unless terminated by subsequent ordinance enacted by the Common Council. If the account is terminated by a subsequent ordinance enacted by the Common Council, the remaining balance of the terminated account shall revert to the general budget of the Common Council. The last ordinance on first reading is ordinance number 22-18, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison amending the zoning Act of the City of Madison, Indiana. Whereas, there's been a recommendation made by the City Madison Plan Commission to the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, to amend the zoning Act of the City of Madison, Indiana. Whereas, the Madison Plan Commission has voted to recommend to the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, that the zoning of the following described property shall be changed from low debts residential to general business, as mentioned in Madison Act 2481 Frank's Drive. Whereas, as investors interest in the City of Madison, Indiana, and citizens of the zoning Act, whereas the law of the Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, occurs with the recommendations issued to another plan. Now therefore being intervened by the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, that section 1, the City of Madison zoning Act being amended, so that the zoning of the following described property will change from low debts residential to general business, as mentioned in 2481 Frank's Drive. But this order shall be full effect from that date.
Want to welcome students from Mr. Bartlett's class. And what you just heard was our council reading ordinances for the first time. It's an introduction to council. But with new ordinances, our rules of procedure require unless rules are waived, that there be three readings. So, we're on first reading for three of the ordinances. And as we progress through tonight's agenda, you'll see that there are actually one ordinance on second reading and four ordinances on third reading. So, give you a little bit of an idea what Carly's procedure is here for the City Council. Moving on, council are there any reports or recommendations and other business from standing or select committees of the City Council?
I would like to possibly consider pushing the redevelopment authority to the third reading and taking a vote. I make a motion that we...
That's her recap.
Oh, just kidding.
Sorry?
I think she's with Don.
Yes, I am, sorry.
Okay. I'm still a little confused by the motion we're talking about. All right. So, council, are there any reports or recommendations of other business from standing or select committees?
I had the Madison Council Traffic Committee met last week and discussed a few traffic issues around town. We put together some recommendations, which will be discussing the Mayor's work.
Thank you. I might ask if I might have a mic run or maybe somebody volunteer in case we do have some change. Sorry, we might have no mic. Was everybody able to hear what Councilman Sevigny said about the Traffic Committee? Gee mind, Patrick in the... So, everybody can hear you. I know we're outside. We'll pass around the mic best we can.
The City Council Traffic Committee met last week and discussed a few issues around town. Parking stall markings to assign to speed bumps. And we've got some recommendations and thoughts that will be shared with the Mayor.
Maybe project that a little bit. I know we'll have some public comment in a little bit. Thank you, Tony. Okay, well, let's start with the report of city officials. We'll invite our Street Superintendent Tony Sorrells to the podium to address the community and City Council.
Good evening, everyone. I was talking to Mike. Good evening, everyone. I've got a few things here to talk about. First thing, mowing. It's a struggle keeping up with mowing all the time. Rain and humidity is kept a growing pretty good. We usually have two DOC crews that help us mow. We're kind of down to one crew. The other crew's not experienced, so they get to run the weed eaters. Month of June, we set up and we got it. It's always a big job. If you guys have the numbers on the sheet. So, that usually takes most of... Most of the month setting up for that, tearing down and everything. Riverfest, right June? We're setting up for Riverfest this week. So, we'll be doing that the rest of the week, setting up for that event. Telegraph Hill, we worked on Telegraph Hill about four or five days. It's been a while since we cut the limbs and the brush back from the edge of the road. So, we cut it all back. I think it looks a lot better. It's a lot safer. You can see the traffic coming and going up and down the hill. Weather permitting, hopefully in the next week or two, we will be pouring some concrete pads at John Paul Park. Putting some benches on the pads for the D.A.R. ladies. So, I know it don't sound like much, but we're always busy doing something.
Tony, I always have a lot going on. Can you give us a little bit of insight? I know that on Telegraph Hill, there's maybe a telephone pole or that was damaged by a car. What's the resolution on it because it is leaning into the road?
Yeah. I retired from Horizon and we didn't leave things that way. The new company seems like they really don't worry about that stuff. I've reported it probably three times. We did have a truck going up it the other day, a construction crew like, and they met a truck coming down it, so they tore the corner off of their truck. He called me and I told him, I said, "You know, man, I'm looking at News Call Frontier", or yeah, Frontier. So, they don't do much. They're trying to get them to move on anything.
Thank you. Any questions for Tony? Any questions for Tony? Ryan Jackson will ask to come up and give a report on the utility.
I'll just hit the highlights since I gave you guys all a written report. But as we all know, the water rate increase, broader rate increase went into effect on July 15th. And since we bill in arrears, nobody in the community's really seen that yet. They're going to begin to start showing up when we bill at the end of this month. Secondly, on the water rate project, Rob Belucci from Commonwealth Engineers, our water supervisor, Jake Mitchell, and myself, we've been going over the plans for the upcoming project to address and clarify some things in the design plans. Once we get the bids in hands, we hope to begin the process of preparing for the upcoming loan at the end of this month. Sewer update, we have installed a new eight-inch sewer main there by the old ruler building. I don't know if anybody's seen it, but we've repaved from First Street all the way up to Heinz Alley, and we installed a new eight-inch main there. The existing one had collapsed and we've got some development going on there. Since there had never been anything there, we didn't know that it had collapsed. But that's looking, that area's looking a lot better than it used to. The main thing I want to talk about was the Indiana Department of Health reached out to our wastewater superintendent, Jay Thompson, and myself, a few months ago about our waste treatment plant participating in a statewide COVID wastewater surveillance sampling study. We agreed to have our plant participate in this study, and it consists of pulling samples twice a week from our influent. And the Department of Health provided the containers and the shipping field, so it's at no cost to us. But in the long run, the goal of this process is to benefit the governments and health organizations so they can analyze the COVID that's in our wastewater because everybody passes it through their waste. And by taking these samples, they're hoping to analyze different communities. They're doing this statewide. Other than that, that's all I have unless you guys have some questions.
So, do we need information back on that or does that go to just information to state clubs?
I don't know that yet, Dan. They haven't started the study yet. But I'll know that as time goes on. They've just begin, they're just beginning reaching out. They wanted to make sure we were willing to do it because some communities did not want to participate. Right now, we're just in the participatory phase and they, there's a company called Biogen, I think that's doing it. Or BioBot, I'm sorry, Biogen's a pharmaceutical company. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell, do you have established what the minimum rate's going to be? Is it the same number of gallons on the water bill?
Yes, yes. It's the 3,000 gallons.
And do you know if the minimum rate's?
Yes, it's 421. It'd be 1263 will be the minimum bill. For water, that's water only. We didn't raise the sewer separately. We didn't do anything with the sewer. Or the trash. If you're in the city limits, you also have a trash fee. Okay?
Thank you. Is our Fire Chief Ken Washer here? All right. We do have a brief report about the training, so we'll move on, move on. So, now we have several bills on third reading. I'll turn it back over to Joe.
All right, the first is ordinance number 22-11, and that is an ordinance for additional appropriation. And that's dealing with aviation grant matching funds. Roll call, vote.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Dan DeTillo?
Yes.
Josh Shaffer? Lucy DeTillo?
Yes.
Carly Cress?
Yes.
And Patrick Tevenoff?
Yes.
The next bill on third reading is ordinance number 2022-12, and this is the ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, establishing the Nuisance Abatement Non-Reverting Fund.
Cress?
Yes.
Tevenoff?
Yes.
Lucy DeTillo?
Yes.
Josh Shaffer? Bartlett?
Yes.
Dan DeTillo?
Yes.
The next ordinance on third reading is ordinance number 2022-13, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, establishing the Planning, Preservation, and Design Non-Reverting Fund.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Tevenoff?
No.
Cress?
Yes.
DeTillo? Lucy DeTillo?
Yes.
Josh Shaffer? Dan DeTillo?
Yes.
And the next one is ordinance number 2022-14. It is an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Madison, Indiana, amending 96.99 of the City of Madison nuisances, health, and safety, 98.6 of the City of Madison streets and sidewalks, and Section 150.24 of the City of Madison Building Regulations, Section 153 of the City of Madison Subdivision Regulations, and Section 155, Section 11.60 of the City of Madison zoning ordinance. Now, just to be clear, this does involve an increase in fees, and so I believe under our rules, Josh cannot vote on this via Zoom.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Dan DeTillo?
Yes.
Cress?
No.
Lucy DeTillo?
Yes.
Tevenoff?
No.
I do not believe that that passes because I think it's going to be the majority of those, of the council. And so, I don't believe, that only got three yes votes, so I don't believe that that passes. I'm going to do a little further research in that. If I'm wrong about it, we can bring it up to the next meeting, but I believe that that's the case. Oh, and then we've got bills, one bill on second reading, and that's ordinance number 2022-15, amending certain portions of ordinance 2008-16, the Disaster Mitigation Fund. Is there any public comment or comment of the council with regards to this?
See? I just want to explain to the audience what this is. So, like a ordinance we had earlier, we received $250,000 from Jefferson County to contribute toward the City of Madison's flood mitigation program. And those funds are going to be deposited into an existing fund that we're amending to accommodate it called the Disaster Mitigation Fund.
I move to suspend the rules of motion clerking on ordinance 2022-15.
I second the motion.
Do you recall vote? Mr. Sevigny? Josh?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. You're right. Any comments or questions about moving that to third reading? Okay, here, now we'll do a roll call vote.
Josh Shaffer?
Is that a yes?
Lucy DeTillo?
Yes.
Dan DeTillo?
Yes.
Patrick Tevenoff?
Yes.
James Bartlett?
Yes.
Carly Cress?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended and we're moving to third reading. We'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, third reading on ordinance number 22-15, and this is the Disaster Mitigation Fund ordinance.
Carly Cress?
Yes.
James Bartlett?
Yes.
Patrick Tevenoff?
Yes.
Dan DeTillo?
Yes.
Lucy DeTillo?
Yes.
Josh Shaffer?
Thank you, thank you, council. Moving through the agenda pretty quickly, there are no miscellaneous items tonight, so we'll open up the floor to public comments if anybody would like to. Oh, Chief Washer is here. It's in the house. Chief, come up and give us a report on all the fabulous things happening within the Madison Fire Department.
This is kind of backwards. Mayor, council members, I hope you all got this in your pocket. If not, I apologize. I was a little late getting it out. You'll notice in June, we had a total of 29 incident runs. In July, we had 36. Training hours for June were 114 and for July were 65. Now, what you don't see there is the time the firefighters put in and forgot. Just as it's been a long, we have right at 200 man. And as we've been getting the fire department, the works of medical, it's not even a good time to do another 30 hours for a day there. And we'll see what it means, what time the firefighters put in and forget. And this weekend will be down after with us again. We're getting ready to start an ERS class for our training, which is Emergency Response Support Class. Now, what this does, we've got nine new members that have volunteered their time to join the company from the City Madison Fire Department. What this class will do is get them on the fire ground, get them acting. They will not be able to put on SCBA to go with interior and fight the fire from the interior, but other than that, they can do everything else. So, this is our first step of getting them towards a firefighter line where they can be totally certified. As always, we will open this up to the county companies. I know Kent reached out to us. They've got like three or four that they want to put in the class. And Manover's got some that they want to put in also. So, there again, we always open it up to the county so that we can get our county firefighter trained also. After that, we're going to be focusing on driver training, driver op, driver and op operations training. When we have these certified classes, it actually helps us with office of our insurance, so we try to have them every year. We will do a cone course of a high school parking lot. We will also do what we call a rapid attack, where they actually drop the line, get the hydrant, and roll out. And it's all taught in this class. And the more that we do, the actual, it actually helps us. Two ways, it helps us on our insurance, and plus on our ISO rating also. Because that is joint training, any time we do joint training, it actually counts as a bill. The other thing we're going to be focusing on is live fire operations. We have a very good working relationship with Gimp Fire over in Kentucky. When they're trading power, we can pretty much use that any time we want. There's a phone over guys, we love to have it. And we've been on duty four times. It's an excellent training facility, something maybe we would want to look at further down the road, but it is an excellent training facility. The worst part of it is going up 36 and get there. We get each other. But once you get there, it is a fabulous facility. So, that's my report for the night. Council, if you have any questions? Thank you.
Hey Kenny?
No, do not do that. I don't care. I mean, you guys can get, we'll change the plan.
Did you want to talk in the mic?
I was just checking to see if there were any other individuals interested in the community, if they were still able to enroll in this class before it starts?
Yes, yes. Now, they will have to have a PSID member from the State of Indiana, so if they want to enroll with it. If they do not have a PSID, they may need to apply for that. Because we'll start like secondary report in front of this class. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. All right. Anybody here would like to address the mayor's office and city council, please come to the podium, identify your name and address, and please feel free to give us your remarks. We also want to invite any of Mr. Bartlett's students to come to class, too. How you doing, sir?
Hi. John Flathers, I'm here with my wife Lynn. We live at 2493 Frank's Drive. And our concern is about the zoning change there on ordinance 2022-18. I really don't want to see that go commercial. It's two doors down from our house. And I understand through, I think, a newspaper article that a Culver's may be playing there, restaurant. Really don't want to hear the drive-through all hours of the night smelling chicken. The lights from that would be disturbing. Just wanted to voice our opinion that we don't accept that or approve of that. Hopefully you're, you're our thoughts on it.
John, thank you for your remarks again. May I get your last name and address again, please, sir?
Yeah, Flathers, F.L.A.T.H.E.R.S., 2493 Frank's Drive.
2493 Frank's Drive. Thank you very much, sir. Are there any other guests here tonight who would like to address mayor's office or city council? Please come to the podium now. All right, hearing none, I know that we're all anxious to get over to the fire trucks and some hot dogs and hamburgers, but I want to give the community a quick update. Riverfest is this weekend, so I know there's a lot of preparations on the riverfront and Councilman Bartlett's been very involved in that, so that's a fantastic community event. We invite everybody to come down for some blues and barbecue with some great entertainment and food Friday and Saturday on the riverfront at Biscayne Centennial Park. I am working on an update to the ARPA local plan. ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act. City of Madison did receive the second tranche today that I've been talking about. So, we actually introduced that local plan approximately a year ago, and now with the second tranche of these funds, we will bring to council an amendment to the local plan, identifying how we intend to spend that money to be impactful across the community. I can tell you right now, it's going to include... I can tell you right now, it's going to include flood mitigation, investment in our parks, infrastructure, and, and those are the three primary categories that we're looking at utilizing those remaining funds for. So that'll be presented in September through an amendment of the local plan. We have also been involved in a lawsuit with other communities supporting our secretary or our attorney general's office with regards to a class action lawsuit against manufacturers and marketers and distributors of opioids. City of Madison has participated in a, in the settlement discussions through the attorney general's office. We're pleased to report that settlement has been reached. And now we're starting to get guidance in from the attorney general's office on how those funds are going to be dispersed across to all participating communities. And in that show, what it means is over the course of the next several years, the city of Madison will receive some funding to help combat substance use and addiction issues in our community. And the state of Indiana through the Indiana Department of Mental Health and Addiction will receive a substantial amount of funds through this lawsuit that it will deploy to help communities counter and interdict drugs throughout our community. One of the ordinances that we had from the very beginning of tonight's meeting was a first reading of a redevelopment authority. I want to let the community know that we've been working very hard on creating a, essentially a master plan for Crystal Beach. We've been under construction for approximately nine months. And in about a month, the pool house itself will be complete. And we'll have an opening of that. That space will become beautiful year round space, ADA accessible. And it certainly has been modernized for, you know, future pool goers and community goers with that space. Unfortunately, because of the significant deterioration of the pool itself, we have had to pause our proposed renovations on the swimming pool because of very serious structural issues with the pool. So we have been working very hard on coming up with a master plan for the, for the pool reconstruction. And that's going to also include a financial plan. We're going to present a full outline of what our intentions are at the September 6th city council meeting. We're going through some engagements now with pool architects and design consultants, our parks commission, council members, and getting some stakeholder input so we can present to the community on, at the September 6th city council meeting, a full plan on what the future of Crystal Beach is. Crystal Beach is an invaluable asset for the community of Madison. Can't imagine not having it. So we're working very hard to make sure that we can bring to the community a pool season in 2023 and also have it be safe and modernized for future generations. That's about all I wanted to express tonight on the mayor's comments. And happy to turn the floor over to city council if they'd like to give any remarks to the community. Hearing none, our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 6th, 5:30, back in city council chambers. Will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. I'll oppose, thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Bartler's class two, for joining us tonight.